Okay, I call to order the Wayne County Board of Commissioners meeting for April the 5th. Our invocation and pledge allegiance today is Commissioner Williams.
Please bow your heads. Lord God, we thank you for bringing us all here together, Lord God. So many people weren't able to come here today because of sickness and even death, Lord God. I ask that you bless this county, Father, that you stop the balance that's going on throughout this county and the state of North Carolina, Lord God, especially the gun balance, Lord God. I ask that you bond it. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the minutes of March 15th.
So move.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Okay, adjustments of the agenda?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. We do have a couple of things we'd like to add. Number one would be under special presentations, we'll make this number one presentation by Judge Heath and discussion of the regional opioid settlement opportunity. And then after, which is now number four, we'll add number five. Commissioner Foster will read the reentry proclamation and ask for approval.
Okay.
And then, under new business, we have contract to purchase along with appropriate budget amendment for 7.07 acres along Corporate Drive. And under our consent agenda, we have added two budget amendments, number 405 and 414, that we discussed during our pre-agenda. And also, we'd like to add, we'll do it at the public hearing. Okay. For number seven, under consent agenda, oh, okay, I'm sorry, we're putting that under new business, excuse me. Number three, under new business, setting a public hearing for April 19th, 2022, at 9:50 a.m. for the economic incentives for Project Dixie Trail.
And I believe we had two additional budget amendments under the consent agenda.
Yes, sir.
Budget amendment 405 and 414.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other adjustments to the agenda?
I hope not.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as modified? Okay, we got a motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Okay, agenda's approved. All right. Mr. Honeycutt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We'd like to welcome Judge Heath. We appreciate Judge Heath being here. In discussions with Judge Heath and about the opioid settlement funds that will be coming to all counties within the state, we've been looking at opportunities of how we could look at something regionally with the 8th district, with Lenore and Green Counties. So Judge Heath has really done a wonderful job of getting grants and doing a lot of different things with drug courts and family drug courts. So she's got a couple ideas that she would like us to consider and maybe be able to look at on a regional basis. So I'll turn that to Judge Heath.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I'm not going to talk real long because I don't know about y'all, but I'm ready to go home. It's been a long day. But I appreciate the chance always to be here with you. And I think the last time I was here, not too terribly long ago, I was just kind of giving you informational status of where we are with drug courts in our district. And since that time, so many exciting things have happened with our program. And I just think we have nothing but good things to look forward to. As you guys know, you got those legislative funds, and we immediately started working out a plan for those for Wayne County, for an adult drug treatment court. We had already been selected to participate in a nationwide training to implement an adult drug treatment court. We already had our team together, so we were just able to step right in with that. We've completed about 12 hours of online training related to that since the last time I was here. Our whole team has, plus some other homework activities that they've asked us to do. And we're actually in the process right now of bringing together all the information we need and are writing for a federal grant with the Bureau of Justice to fund the actual adult drug treatment program. And that's going to be due sometime in May, so it's right, is here, right around the corner. And I just have very good feelings about that in discussions with the national folks that we've been talking with about that. So that's the newest exciting thing, is being able to start that adult drug treatment court. And we will, we'll be starting that right here in Wayne County. We're going to do Wayne first, get it up and going, and then expand to Lenore and Green is my plan. Along those lines, one of the things that has, and I know you guys have had this brought before you many times at this point, are the opioid settlement funds. And I slightly mentioned this the last time I was here. When I started going to training and hearing about those funds and the things that were going to be going on, you know, my light bulbs were going off about how to, well, we know we live in what's considered rural eastern North Carolina. And one of the main things that happens when you're involved in the federal grant world is you've got to show these folks that you are able to sustain those grants. And in rural eastern North Carolina, I can't just come and say, Wayne County, you support this now, Lenore County, you support this now. It's not going to, we don't have that kind of money like the big metropolitan areas do. So that's always been in the back of my mind. And when they started talking about the opioid settlement funds, I started thinking, how could we best, as a group, a community, utilize those funds to sustain the programs that we now have going on in our community? And I think I told you this before, drug courts as a partner to the rest of the options in the community are a great source because drug courts bring together everybody. They bring together treatment providers, transportation folks, housing folks, parenting, DSS, the community colleges, anything you can think of are all part and partners to drug courts. So I just feel like it's a way we can really put together a really comprehensive program with the things we already have and help our citizens. And so in that regard, and not to mention that the opioid settlement funds, as y'all know, are very specifically delineated as to what they can be used for. And again, drug courts checks off, when you go look at option A, just about every, what is it, nine or 10 of them in option A, drug courts check them off. So I started thinking about the best way, how could we do that? And the idea to me of a district-wide program is, I think, has the potential to at least explore and discuss whether we could accomplish something like that because I think we could get the most bang for our buck with that kind of approach. We have many common players in this whole system that rotate around through Wayne, Lenore, and Green Counties. And so instead of having to hire, you know, pay for a judge in each county, you can just have one lucky person like me that's going to go around and deal with it in all three counties. Or same with the district attorney, you know, he's district-wide. The guarding ad lading program is district-wide. Some of the treatment providers move back and forth between the counties. Right now, I know y'all all know Chris Jenkins and Hope Restorations over in Kinston. Right now, I have one of the abuse and neglect participants in Wayne County is now over there in that house. Not that she's permanently going to stay in Lenore County, but that she needed housing. So we were able to get her over there, and we can service her in the Lenore County Court till she gets on her feet and we can get her back over here where her family and her children are. So that has worked really well, that kind of partnership. And so what I'm proposing is, I'm not asking anybody to commit to anything tonight or to promise any money to anybody because we're not going to do that, are we, Mr. Partner? But what I am asking you guys to do is to be willing to explore that possibility and at least be open to joining into conversation to see what we can do. I would love to have, I've been calling it, because I had to call it something, like a recovery center. Kind of makes it sound like a treatment place, and that's not really what it is, but it's all, it would be a hub. And all of our funds would be able to go into this hub, and then the drug courts would be part of it. And then when a treatment provider over here wanted to propose something, they would be able to come to this organization and present their plan, and that organization would sort of oversee the whole thing. I think it's a win-win for counties because if y'all don't have something like that, I don't, I can't imagine how you're going, it's a good sum of money, how it's going to be managed. Somebody's going to have to do that. So that's my proposal. I will tell you that Lenore and Green, I was in Green yesterday, they signed off on it, Lenore signed off on it the week before, and so they're willing to enter in at this point to the conversations. And that's all I'm here to ask you for tonight. And I don't know if anybody has any other questions for me about what's going on, but I appreciate your time.
I had a comment.
Okay.
Judge Heath, you said you wanted to go home.
You want to send me home?
No, you said you wanted to go home, but I could tell that you're really passionate about this. And when you're passionate about something, it takes a little bit longer to express it. So, you know, I could see your passion in regards to helping.
Well, thank you, but some of these people that know me will know that wasn't talking real well. So I appreciate that, though.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you so much. Thank you for coming and sharing that with us.
I guess there may be a consensus to allow Wayne County, or do we need a motion to allow Wayne County to participate?
I think at this point, we want to consider it and.
Right, have consensus to allow staff to begin having discussions.
Yeah, let's talk about it. Okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much, Judge.
Okay, thank you, guys. Y'all take care.
All right. I know we have some other presentations. We did have on schedule at 5:15 a public hearing, so if we can go a little bit out and have our public hearing at this time since it's 5:20. So at this time, I open a public hearing to receive comments regarding a proposed ordinance regulating shooting ranges within the planning jurisdiction of Wayne County. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the subject?
No one signed up, sir.
Okay. In that no one is here to speak on the subject, is there any comments from any board members? Okay, I close the public hearing. That was a fast public hearing. I close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the ordinance regarding regulating shooting ranges within the planning jurisdiction of Wayne County.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve the ordinance regulating shooting ranges within Wayne County. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Just one comment, Mr. Chairman. This is based on the NRA recommendations, so I feel comfortable that, you know, with their, with their, using their regulations, that this would be the right thing for Wayne County.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by raising your right hand. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. All right, now we're going to go back to special presentations. Mr. Honeycutt?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'd like to have Chris Barnes, who is our director for 911 Dispatch, and it is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, and Chris will be glad to read the resolution.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, for allowing me this opportunity to come before you today. I wonder if you would beg me an indulgence, and we've got several of our telecommunicators within the audience today. And with your permission, sir, I'd like to have them just stand while we read this.
Please do, and if the Commissioners would, I'd like to give you a. Great.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
So whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas the safety of our police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Wayne County 911 Center, and whereas public safety telecommunications are the first first responders and the most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, and whereas public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our police officers, firefighters, and paramedics by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety, and whereas the public safety telecommunications of Wayne County have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients, and whereas each telecommunications has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wayne County Board of Commissioners declares the week of April 10th through 16th, 2022, to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Wayne County in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our county and citizens safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion we approve the April 10th through 16th, 2022, as National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week in Wayne County.
Great. We've got a motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion?
Just some quick comment, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
As Chris just stated, when you hear the word first responder, you've normally think of EMS, fire, law enforcement. But really, this is our first responders right here. Their body's not there, but they're the first ones on the scene. And they take, people just take for granted. But when you have an emergency, the law enforcement can't show up, the fire department can't show up, EMS can't show up until they've done their job. And when a call comes in, they're trained now to do both, just answer a phone and take information. While they're getting the job done and dispatching someone, they're, they're on that computer finding out what to say, what to do, exactly where to put you. I've been a first responder for a long time. I can remember when they had to use landmarks. Well, the only way you can use landmarks is you've got to know the county. And this county is too big for y'all to know all the landmarks. But with the GPS and all that, it's just in the system. And I'd say, these people, they're taking for granted a whole lot.
Oh, yeah.
But they, they are your first responders. And I just want to thank all of you for what you do. And thank you.
Great.
I've always said the call starts with them.
It does.
And we thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Okay, congratulations. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything you do. Okay, Mr. Honeycutt?
Do you want to get a picture? Picture. Carol, let's get a picture in front of, so we, yeah, 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 yeah.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, just jump the road.
Take your road.
Jump the road.
Jump the road.
Avoid falling down on one of these roads.
Chris, get in here.
Not a baby camp.
There you go. There's the camp.
Yeah, just stare at the pills, let me know if he's got it.
All right, good. Thank you. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Next on our agenda, under special presentations, motion to approve the month of the Military Child Proclamation, and Ms. Heather Winstead.
Hello, thank you so much for having me this evening. I am the military liaison for Wayne County Public Schools, and I'm here tonight in support of military children across Wayne County. April is month of Military Child, so we're going to do this proclamation for them. Whereas thousands of brave Americans have demonstrated their courage and commitment to freedom by serving in our country's armed forces and active-duty posts around the world, and whereas nearly 2 million children have at least one parent currently serving active-duty military, and whereas Wayne County Public Schools has approximately 2,000 military-connected students, nearly 13% of its student population who are children of active-duty, reserve, retired, veteran, and whereas the U.S. Department of Defense celebrates the month of April as month of the Military Child, further highlighting the important role of military children play in the armed forces community, and whereas the children of our service members are major contributors to the strength of their parents and make significant contributions to the family, schools, our community, the state, the nation, and despite repeated and prolonged absence of one or both parents, and whereas parents serve in the military, their kids serve too. And it is fitting for our country and county to pay tribute to military children for their commitment, their struggle, and their unconditional support of troops. Now therefore, I ask the Commissioners of Wayne County to hereby proclaim April 2022 as the month of the Military Child and April 8th as Purple Up Day for Wayne County Public Schools. We encourage all to celebrate in the spirit of military children across our district and nation by wearing purple on April 8th as an outward symbol of support and appreciation for our youngest heroes.
Great. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the month of April as Military Child proclamation. Okay, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. We've got it unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is number three, or fourth, motion to approve April 2022 as National Association of Counties proclamation, and I will read that. April 2022, National County Government Month, Counties Thrive. Whereas the nation's 3,069 counties, parishes, and boroughs, serving more than 315 million Americans, provide essential services to create health, safety, and vibrant communities, and whereas counties provide public health services, administer justice, keep communities safe, foster economic opportunities, and much more, and whereas Wayne County and all counties take pride in our responsibility to protect and enhance the health and well-being and safety of our residents in efficient and cost-effective ways, and whereas, under the leadership of the National Association of Counties, President Larry Johnson, NACO is demonstrating how counties thrive, especially in supporting residents and businesses during the Corona pandemic, and whereas each year since 1991, the National Association of Counties have encouraged counties across the country to elevate awareness of county responsibilities, programs, and services, and whereas Wayne County continues to work towards a better quality of life with projects such as the new Health Department and Department of Social Services building, new schools, new buildings at Wayne Community College, and more. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wayne County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim April 2022 as National County Government Month.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve the proclamation. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Hearing no discussion on the motion. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Okay.
And our next proclamation will be read by Commissioner Foster for the 2022 reentry month proclamation.
Yes, thank you. First, I'd like to thank two people because I didn't even know anything about April being reentered, period, you know? So Councilwoman Brandy Matthews emailed me and asked me, did I know? And I was like, no. And just so, what she's been doing with the program at Wayne Community is outstanding. And I text Craig immediately, and most of the time, he never returns my texts. He was the whole point on this. He actually called me, and he went straight into action, and I'd just like to thank both of them first and foremost. This is important to me because, you know, I once re-entered, went, re-entered society after being in prison for a year, you know? It's a, it's proof that people can change. You know what I mean? No matter where you're at in life, you know, you just need a chance, you know? And I think with this program, it's given a lot of individuals a chance across America, here in Wayne County, just, period, it's just great. So now I'm going to read the 2022 reentry month proclamation. Whereas 70 million Americans have criminal records of some kind, and whereas 600,000 are released from federal and state prison each year, and whereas promoting the rehabilitation and reintegration of individuals into society with a future is an important goal for all communities, and whereas policies that limit a second chance are detrimental to opportunities related to employment with local governments, state governments, the federal government, and private companies, and whereas engaging private sector and honoring champions of change are important tools, along with the proper education and reducing recidivism. And whereas of the county of Wayne continues to partner with the Wayne County Reentry Council, Wayne County, Wayne Community College, local industry, and all the units of government to promote reentry efforts for motivated individuals to complete for jobs, obtain stable housing, support their families, and contribute to their communities. Now therefore, Wayne County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the month of April as reentry month in Wayne County, North Carolina, and encourage residents to observe this month and recognize the effort of those who worked to improve their rehabilitation and reintegration of formerly incarcerated individuals. And witness where I have unto set my hands and fix this seal of Wayne County, North Carolina, this fifth day of April 2022.
Great. That in form of a motion to.
Yes, sir.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve the proclamation. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Thank you so much. Okay. All right, that's the end of our special presentation, so our point, committee?
Yes, Mr. Chair. In the form of a motion, we'd like to appoint Melissa Reese to the LME MCO position on the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Okay.
In the form of a motion, we'd like to appoint Danny Cave Edwards to the Board of Southern Wayne Sanitary District, replacing Mr. Scott Ingram.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand.
Motion to reappoint Ms. Debbie Harris to the Wayne Community College Board of Trustees.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Okay.
And a motion to appoint Mr. Charles Matthews to the Wayne County Planning Board.
Okay, any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Okay.
One opposed.
You had one opposed?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any, anything else?
That's it, Mr. Chair.
All right, that's all the appointment committee. We've had the public hearing, consent agenda. Your motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
As amended.
As amended, yes.
So moved.
We have a motion on the floor. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Under new business.
Was that Commissioner Williams that made the motion on consent?
No, no.
That was Commissioner Horst.
Under new business, we've got a motion to approve policies, and I'll turn that over to Mr. Honeycutt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Under new business, we are asking for a motion to approve the following policies that will govern the use of the American Rescue Plan Act funds, the ARPA. govern the use of the American Rescue Plan Act funds, the ARPA funds that the county has received. This would be the eligible use policy, the allowable cost policies, the nondiscrimination policy, property management policy, and record retention policy. And again, these are basically templates that we've received from the feds. Basically, if you want to spend the money, we have to spend it their way, and you have to have the policies and procedures in place to spend it and receive those funds. So there's still a couple other policies that our attorneys are still working on, that we should be able to bring to you at our next meeting, but we wanted to go ahead and get these to you now, so that if there was any questions, that we could, you know, be ready to go when all the policies are complete.
Okay, we need a motion to approve the policies as outlined.
So move.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. All right, next items.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Under New Business, also would like to ask the board set a public hearing for April 19th, 2022, at 9:15 a.m. for economic incentives for Project Dixie Trail.
All right, do I have a motion on...
So move.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to set a public hearing on April 19th. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Did you get that vote?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then?
Public comment.
Contract purchase.
Number two.
You skipped over number two.
Oh, I am, I am, I am sorry, please, please forgive me, I'm sorry. We have a purchase and sell agreement, a contract in front of you, between the county and the Gambella. They own property of 7.07 acres off Corporate Drive. The plan is to use that for part of our DSS and Health Department campus, and it will help with the entrance there. This will be part of that entire project, and we really want to make that a really nice campus and a drive coming in to the new building. So I appreciate all the help that the board has given us on working and looking at this property and looking at the site plan, but we feel like that this is a good purchase for the county, it solves a couple of needs with respect to some warehousing as well, also some office building, and you have this contract in front of you for the 7.07 acres that has been approved and signed by the family. And with the appropriate budget amendment, again, of $1.2 million.
No, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the contract to purchase the property located at 800 Corporate Drive with appropriate budget amendment.
Oh, excuse us, 1.3, I'm sorry, 1.3, yes, sir.
Yeah, I was going to correct you on that part.
Okay, all right, we have a motion on the floor, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Okay, at this time, we are going to open our, for public comments, each speaker will have a time limit of up to four minutes, and Madam Clerk, do we have anyone that's signed up?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have a Mr. Gary Packer. I've already sent Commissioner Foster shared the information that Mr. Packer brought by passing it down, as well as a business card, so Mr. Packer, if you will...
Mr. Packer, please come and speak.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, and glad to be here this afternoon. My name is Gary Packer, and I'm the national president of Dillard-Goldsboro Alumni Friends Incorporated. I come before you today to seek a partnership or sponsorship from the county of Wayne. As you know, we have been around over 67 years, this would be our 67th year of celebrating this homecoming event that we have. And the one thing that makes us unique, other than any other organization, is that we are a high school reunion group of individuals that was birthed right here by Reverend Dillard when he first came here to Wayne County as a teacher. We have evolved into an organization now, as far as alumni, we have chapters in New York, New Jersey, Washington DC, Goldsboro, Atlanta, Charlotte, the Triangle, and looking to expand into the triad, Western Greensboro-Hopon area. But we are, as I said, made up of high school individuals. For the, in 2020, during the pandemic, that was our first time in the history of our organization that we had to cancel our event. Last year, in 2020, we had a virtual presentation, Mr. Freeman actually was a participant in that, and several commissioners every year are invited to be a participant in our rewards night, awards night for our scholarship recipients on that Thursday, which will be the 26th of this year. I think Mr. Honeycutt was there one year. And what you have in front of you is basically an overview of some of the things that we do, and the reason that I come before you today is that our organization has a significant financial impact to the city and county, and at no time, to my knowledge, have we ever requested any funding from any of our governmental agencies at all. But we always look to invite y'all to be a part of what we do. Now, what I'm requesting and proposing is that the county would plant a seed that would potentially be every year, and I'm looking at between $10,000 to $20,000 seed every year. Now, what will we do with these monies? Right now, currently, all the events that we're able to put on is strictly by volunteers and through memberships of our organization. We don't have any corporate sponsors, none of that, it's all through donations by individuals like myself and people like you, who just give a dollar, $10, or purchase a yearly membership to our organization. But with more funds, we can do more things. Currently, right now, our organization's impact to the city of Goldsboro is only second to the airshow, which is every other year, and I looked at theirs, the last time, I think was 2018, I think it was $6 million. Our impact is between $3.8 and $4 million, that's on the low side, because I found out that traveling tourism does not really track our impact, and I was astonished to find out that they did not do that. Now, I did one year see that there was a publication that listed us as things to do when you come to Wayne County was the Memorial Day Weekend by the Dillard-Goldsboro Alumni. And so that tells us that we are strong and vibrant, but we're wanting the county to be a part of what we do. Now, when the Max Center first opened, I think Mr. Honeycutt came the year, and he made a presentation, he said that y'all are by far our largest renters of our facility, and I'm willing to extend a long-term contract to our organization. Now, the Max Center is already booked for this year already, both nights during our presentations that we'd be doing, so is every other venue in this county. We fill up every hotel, we fill up every venue, we're in every restaurant, every catering business, we're in every park, we are everywhere that you can imagine, because I know you probably see the flags flying and the abundance of out-of-state tanks where people come home to celebrate with us on that weekend. And so what I'm proposing is that the county become a part of us as a sponsor to what we do, and I would hope that you would consider that, and if you have any questions, I give you on my business card, if you even have any questions for me today, I'm glad to entertain you, since I'm the only one in here, you know, and so, you know, I don't know, I think my four minutes are probably up, but I just enjoy what I do. I'm only the second president, I was a Goldsboro High School graduate, as I came back home, I was elected president, and unfortunately, two of my years were suffered during the pandemic. I was re-elected dismay for an additional three years, and I must say, my mother was the first class of reunion people for this organization, and that's been some...
Well, again, I think we can see that you're about as passionate as Judge Heath in what you do, but thank you so much for coming today and sharing that with us, take it under consideration.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chair, I had a question. Yeah, okay. Travel and tourism, have they actually did any advertising when they do come, does it...
They had, from what I understand, the director resigned.
Yes.
And so I have made contact, and what we will start doing, we have, I have an individual that kind of handles our media side, we will be placing every hotel, we will have signing sheets, welcome to Goldsboro, things, so anybody staying in the hotel, but what they had done, they were only tracking rooms that the organization blocked, not every recipient. And the rules that we blocked was basically for our board of directors, when they come into town, they have a place to stay, and so what we did, we blocked rooms in certain hotels, and that was the only information they could pull from was rooms blocked under our name, but we actually filled up every hotel.
Well, what I was asking was, this travel and tourism, do they post on their site that this event is happening?
They will now, I have a contact person with travel and tourism, when I went and met with them to find out that we would not be recognized, and so we're going to be working with them to make sure all the information is captured.
And Mr. Parker, two years, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, two years ago, I went to a tourism board to try to find out how the economic impact of Dillard, and what I found is, they don't cite Thursday and Friday.
No, they do not, because we are a four-day event.
Exactly.
And as I say, the commissioners, every elected official are always invited to be a part of our parade, which will be downtown, and every business benefits from that, and even as I talk to some of the local people, specifically people that sell the fish, that's a big time for them, I think I need to talk to Brightleaf Smithfield Hot Dogs, and the Hunter Pork Center, because, and Pigley Wiggle on Nine Street, because all of those people really benefit from us because of the impact that we make on them. And like I say, I just hope that y'all would consider the proposal to be a partner with us as a sponsor for the events that we have.
And if I may say something?
Yes, sir.
That gentleman over there advocated, when he was a city councilman, that the parade had flags and banners down Center Street, so we can't forget about Commissioner Foster.
No. You know, I know Mr. Foster, we met, well, actually, I've been knowing for some time, but we was at a business venture one day, but the city, I don't know who controls those flags, but we did see some flags hanging up in 2019 downtown, and there was two billboards that have, actually on Wayne Memorial, out here by Parrish Teter, and out here on 70, coming in to Goldsboro, somebody had two billboards that were advertising our events, and those are some of the areas that we're looking to advertise also. And just so you know, this is a sidebar, next Wednesday, our organization will be giving away 100 devices to kids in this area, and this will be the third round, we gave away 100 devices earlier in the year, and we gave away 40 laptops, so this will be 240 devices that will be given away for kids in this area. So we not only give back, but we also make sure that we try to promote education for the kids, specifically through the scholarships that we do give away every year.
Okay, well, thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, I'd like to thank you for letting me have this.
Sure, sure. And Mr. County Manager, I would encourage you to reach out to travel and tourism, because this is definitely a benefit to our community, to our county, and that's what travel and tourism is all about, is promoting things like that, so I think those funds should be there.
There's some marketing funds and some grants that are available under travel and tourism, but we'll get our new director in touch and make sure that he's aware and...
Well, Commissioner Barbara Acock is now on that board, but I think you attend that as well, so if y'all will please advocate for that, we'd appreciate it.
We will.
Okay, County Managers report.
Do you have just a couple of things, Mr. Chairman? One that I do want to apologize, our HR Director, Ginger Williams, or Ginger Moore, not Williams, I'm sorry, Ginger Moore, could not be here today, and she has been working real closely with Commissioner Williams and on the summer intern program, and so I just want to give you a quick update of where we're at and where we're going, so to let you know, and this is from Ginger on our program, "We're actively reviewing the applicants for the program coordinator for holding temporaries, we will set recommendations through this Friday of this week, and plan to have somebody in place within two weeks. We have created and are ready to send out our application for students. First, we will be contacting the guidance counselors of each Wayne County High School to introduce ourselves and our program, the counselors can ensure that our information is going, getting out to all students as well. Once our program coordinator is in place, they will finalize the details involving student-parent orientation and selection. I've been meeting, I have a meeting scheduled for the 13th of this month with Wayne Community College to discuss weekly training for students. Ideally, students will work Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday of each week, and attend soft-skill training classes on Wednesdays through the college. Training will address resume writing, interviewing, and email etiquette, interpersonal skills, presentations, and financial literacy. And again, we've got the program dates scheduled right now to be July 1 through August 15."
Okay.
It is moving forward, and it's probably, seems like it's moved slower, but we have really started this from scratch in the last couple of months, and I again appreciate the support Commissioner Williams has given us on this as well, and...
I appreciate the support from the Board of Commissioners.
A lot of work's been done by Ginger and her HR staff, and just couldn't be thankful enough for what they're doing, and we'll have a good program, they'll, it'll get there, but we will have a good program this year for our first year, so very excited.
That's good to hear, because this was a county-wide, our board set this as a goal. We joined with Commissioner Williams, he brought it to the board, we thought it was a great idea, it is a great idea, and I think that in this year is the start of the program, and I certainly envision that over the years, it will expand a great deal.
Yes, sir.
Keep up the good work, make sure it happens.
We will.
Couple of... Wait a minute, Mr. Chairman, also on that, I brought it up at the Board of Trustees meeting at the college the other night, or the other day, and they were very excited because the way they look at this summer program is, hopefully, that we can get these young people headed in the right direction, and they can further their education at Wayne Community or either another, you know, another institution somewhere, that they can further their education, you know, the main thing is getting them started off on the right foot.
Good, keep up the good work.
Did want to let you know as well, want to thank our county attorneys, Borden and Andrew, the MOUs, with our partners for the great grants have been done and submitted and approved on their, above our ends, so we're ready for the great grant application, so we will have that application, again, everything's in by May 4th, but, you know, they've done some just yeoman's work to get it done, and the MOUs completed and agreed upon to move forward, so we'll, should be in good shape for all three of those applications, so I did want to thank Andrew and Borden for that. Did also want to mention that we're starting to get into budget season, and our budget process starts next week, so we will be, if you can't find us, we'll get back to you, but it is budget time, so just wanted to throw that out at you, and also wanted to mention, if you're over 50, and none of you out there are over 50, but you can get your, another booster for your COVID, they're available at our site, over off of 70 at the old food line, I think Borden said he went yesterday, there is not a wait, so if you are over 50, you're qualified to get that second, you, 25...
So we got one that's under...
But, you know, just wanted to mention that, but encourage those, if they would like to, that if you'd like a second booster, they are available, four months after, that's right, four months after your last booster shot.
Are they still giving the first booster?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
First, second, yes, and that's all I have at this time.
Okay. Mr. Williams?
Thank you, sir.
This is going to be a little different today, I just want to honor my mom, she had, she's an April baby, an April Fool, she's not a fool, but you know that day, but she had, she celebrated her birthday, and also my aunt, I mean, my, my niece, she's an April 1st baby, and she celebrated as well, she shared it with my mom, and I just want to honor my mom, you know, sometimes you, you kind of don't realize how important it is just to let them know that you valued them, and I really, really, you know, honor my mom and hope she has many, many more birthdays, and just a shout out to all the April babies. You as well, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Foster?
No comment.
Okay. Commissioner Barbara Acock?
I would like to emphasize, Commissioner Williams, you know, we went to the education breakfast this morning, and we seen the statistics of what needs to be done in Wayne County and the state, you know, with our youth, and it was very alarming to me to see some of the statistics that were showing of the young people not going to school and dropping out. So hopefully, this program will be a big booster for them to get interested in going back to school and seeing the need. Also, I went to the Wayne Community Child Abuse Special they had Monday, and those were very alarming statistics that they also gave. I did not realize there was as much child abuse in Wayne County as there is, and they brought the little children out from the nursery, and my, I just can't imagine anybody wanting to hurt anything as precious and sweet as those children were. But it, it was just very enlightening to know that what's going on in Wayne County with some of the children that are having to suffer through some of the things that they're having to do, and some of the deaths of small babies and stuff, and that's basically all I have, Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Hartson?
As of last week, you may have seen that there were no COVID patients in Wayne Memorial. As of today, we have four, and one happened to be an employee. Wayne County is one of four counties that is medium risk in the state of North Carolina, and hopefully, the numbers at next week will be low risk, and if that, so as, as the county manager, Mr. Honeycutt stated, get your booster chart, charts, if it's the first or second, please get them, because COVID is not going away.
Mr. Gurley?
I ain't got anything.
Mr. Acock?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, all of us have been busy the last couple of weeks. We want to thank the chairman and myself and Mr. Honeycutt and Mr. Crupper, went out on base to discuss with them the, the concerns they have for response time for EMS on the base. We had a very good meeting, and I think we, we, you know, we're going to resolve that issue. We may not get it down to exactly the, the timeframe that they are looking at, not that started the base looking at, but the air force itself is looking at, but had a very good meeting, I think we, if the outcome's going to be good. Also went to Trooper Nolan Sanders' bridge dedication, very touching ceremony, the Lieutenant Colonel that spoke at, at the ceremony, I don't know whether he was a preacher or what, but he was one of those, those people that you could just sit and listen to for an hour. He did a fantastic job. Also attended the, the opening or the grand opening ceremony for Atlantic Casualty, they had a good turnout. They employ a lot of people in Wayne County, and we are grateful that, you know, Atlantic Casualty chose Goldsboro to, in Wayne County to build our facility. Also attended the healthcare breakfast, had a good turnout for that, the education breakfast this morning, as Barbara said, you know, some of the figures is very, very disturbing, but hopefully, you know, with our public school system, Wayne Community College and University of Mount Olive, that we hope we can get some of those numbers turning around. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I, I do want to remind the commissioners that our budget schedule is starting, I think, as early as next week, and we are encouraging commissioners that are interested in participating in that budget discussion. The schedule is being posted and kept by Kaylin, so it's limited to three commissioners at a time on any one of those particular segments, but I encourage you all to reach out with Kayla and find out if you want to attend any of those. It's a good time to learn a great deal about the operations of each one of the departments, and see what their request is and their needs and their budget needs as such. So it kind of gives you a jump on the upcoming discussion on budgets. I do want to point out that we did have Commissioner Gurley, Commissioner Acock, and County Manager Honeycutt, that I and myself did attend the NCACC Regional Meeting in New Bern. It was a, a good time, it was partially attended, which was a little surprising to me. I know that it was the first time that they've had a meeting in person, but one of the things that I veiled ourselves off is to bring up the discussion, since there were three legislators in the audience, about the legislation restricting the use of funds for expansion of broadband, so we kind of called them on the carpet without calling them on the carpet. They did actually see that there was a, a real need there to adjust that, that, some of their definitions. With that said, that's all I have, is we do have some additional things here. Yes, Mr. Parker?
Instead of adjourned, if you would recess until noon on Friday?
And that, the thought process is, if there is additional information that may come from economic development?
Understand.
That we would not have to go ahead and, and call a special call.
A special meeting, we can just.
We could just go for recess, but if it, things work out.
Then we'll just, you'll have me come over here and adjourn the meeting. All right, that sounds like a plan.
So we will not have to actually have a meeting unless.
Unless it doesn't work out, unless the negotiations are, are not agreeable.
Because I cannot be here Friday, I have a funeral that I'm not going to miss.
We'll, we'll let you know beforehand, one way.
I'm sure it'll work out. So is anything else come before the board? We are in recess until Friday at?
Noon.
At what time?
Noon.
At noon, Friday at noon.